Everybody. Welcome to today's meeting. Call the roll, please, Mary.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Faas.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer will be given by Kevin Guffey from Crossroads Christian Church.
Lord, we thank you for a beautiful morning. We thank you for this time that we can come together. I thank you for our city council. I thank you for the time and sacrifice that each one of them make to serve. I thank you for our new city manager, Mr. Villegas. I pray, Lord, for he and his family as they transition into this community that you will bless them as they move and as they get settled in. May this just be a really great place for their family as it is for ours. Lord, we pray over this meeting today. We pray for wisdom. We pray for guidance. We pray your peace and your mercy over each person. Lord, may decisions that are made continue to be good for the citizens of this community. Lord, we do thank you for this place where we live and work and play. We thank you for all those who work hard to keep us safe. We thank you for all those who work hard to maintain our parks and our roads and everything else that we can often take for granted, but we thank you for all those that work in this city. And we thank you for the citizens who contribute and also make it a good place to live. So may you bless this meeting today. May you be honored and glorified in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Next item?
Item number four, proclamations. Smallville.
It is the most wonderful time of year. So those that are receiving the Smallville proclamation, please meet me at the podium. We will put these on.
It's a little tight.
It's not made for glass?
It works.
It works.
Goodness.
Whereas the fictional character Clark Kent, aka Superman, arrived in Smallville, Kansas in a spaceship during a meteor shower. And whereas the city of Hutchinson in Smallville share many similarities, and whereas the city of Hutchinson has formally recognized these similarities since June 21st of 2013, when Clark Kent, Superman, was inducted into the Kansas Hall of Fame. Whereas Hutch Rec, in collaboration with community partners with the Kansas State Fair, Stratica, the Cosmosphere, Salt City Brewing, Hutchinson Zoo, Downtown Hutchinson, and the NACI Comic-Con announce the 2024 Smallville Festival. Now, therefore, I agree with Faas, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim that June 20th through the 22nd, 2024, the City of Hutchinson shall be known as Smallville, Kansas, the home of Clark Kent. Congratulations. And this is, I thank Bill Reed. I always loved this time of year, and it's been going on 11 years, so welcome.
Welcome to Smallville, everyone. Oh my gosh, the masks. I appreciate you guys so much. This is fantastic. Again, I left mine at home so I could just be in earnest, a member of the community for you today. I'm Jace Chambers. I'm arts and culture coordinator with Hutch Rec, and I have the pleasure and high-stress levels to do all things Third Thursday for this community every month, and Smallville Festival is one of my favorites. I'm super stoked for us to be the kickoff this Thursday for the Smallville Festival. We are going to do some amazing things. We have some amazing sponsors to bring to the community, things like the bounce house area, the inflatables area. We're going to have a food truck court. We have our amazing kids costume contest, where we have a local cosplay judge who's got an amazing online following and is a youth from our own community, so that's a wonderful thing to celebrate. And then we have just a robust weekend of many, many other activities to do. The Local Heroes Luncheon, we have the superheroes at the Hutchinson Zoo, we have the Logan Mize Street Concert, which I'm super stoked for. That's going to be amazing outside Salt City Brewing. And then we also have on Saturday, Mackel Comic Cons is hosting the first-ever Hutch Comic Con on the fairgrounds, which will be followed up by the Fair Food and Tunes Event hosted by the fairgrounds team. And then we also have the 5K at Stratica that morning. There will be a downtown scavenger hunt that has some really, really cool prizes. If you haven't checked it out yet, we're having some custom painted coolers as the gift basket prizes that are superhero-themed and inspired, and that'll be full of local goodies. So if you're interested in that kind of prize, that's the day to go out downtown and spend some time at our businesses in the afternoon. And then, of course, the Amazing Space Race at the Cosmosphere will also be happening that same day. I'm sure there are even things that I forgot to mention. So if you want to find out all that information, please go to the Smallville Festival on Facebook, or you can head over to hutchrec.com under the festivals tab and check out all things Hutch Rec and all of our partners that are hosting amazing community events for this really fun weekend festival. Thank you so much for celebrating with me, and this is an outdated shirt, but I think it's still very relevant. So I'm from Smallville. What's your superpower? Thank you.
City council, everyone here, you guys rock. Had Father's Day this past weekend. Unlike some in my family, my name is Superboy. I also go by Connor Kent. So my dad, you might know of him. I think you just named the city for him. I'm not afraid to share my secret identity. I just think this is really awesome. 11 years since I came in here and asked for the name change, and to see how the festival has grown with all the community sponsors and collaboration with everyone is just amazing. So I look forward to a fun weekend. I also think that June is a perfect month for it, just because, you know, there's so many different events going on prior June 17th. It's a good reminder that Smallville is here to stand for inclusiveness, equality. Everyone's invited, and it's really all about just having a good time. And I look forward to seeing you guys out there on Third Thursday or Saturday at the Comic Con. I don't think Superman will be here, but myself, Supergirl, and Crypto will be out taking pictures with everybody. So I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Item number five, oral communications from the audience.
This is a time where you would have five minutes to address the council. You can come to the microphone, state your name, address, and if it's related to something else on the agenda, we will ask for you to wait till that agenda item is spoke about. But is there anybody here that wants to address the council?
My name is Gary Edgar. I live at 100 North Main Street, also known as the Wiley Building. For the past seven years, I've lived there, and I want to compliment the City of Hutchinson for their downtown master plan. I'm really excited about that because I really love living downtown. However, there are some items that I think should be addressed, and one of those is city sidewalks. They are deteriorating somewhat downtown, especially the corner, the southeast corner of First and Main. I mentioned that to Mayor Faas here a couple of weeks ago, and there are numerous trip hazards on that intersection. Not only that, but during the downtown beautification project, there were 12 by 12 blocks placed intermittently in the sidewalks. Those have settled over time. Those are definite trip hazards for people that are walking on our sidewalks. Also, I'd like to address the problem of bicycles on the sidewalk in the downtown area. I know there's a city ordinance against that. However, law enforcement is not enforcing that. I mentioned it here to the council probably a year, year and a half ago, and at that time they said, well, we need to do some educational things before we start issuing tickets, but I don't think anything's been done. And it's not only bicycles, it's scooters, skateboards, segways, all of these things. I saw a man the other day riding his motorcycle down Main Street, turned onto the sidewalk, and parked in front of First National Bank on the sidewalk. And I just don't think that should be something that we have downtown or allow downtown. And a couple of other things that I want to mention is lane striping on certain streets. And streets that I travel most frequently are Plum Street from 30th to Avenue A. The striping has really been deteriorated. Fourth Street from Adams to K-61, and 11th Street from Monroe to the Airport Road. Those stripes have deteriorated quite a bit, and people are maybe unsure of where they need to be and what lane they need to be. So I think that could be addressed.
I appreciate your comments, and they're noted, and I've noticed the same thing about striping in reference to your comments about downtown crosswalks and whatnot. We do have a grant pending. We're waiting to hear back.
I understand.
A significant amount of money could be coming our way for those items.
And I know we have a business, bicycle business, coming down on Main Street, and I know they have a back door and a huge parking lot behind the store. I think that should probably be addressed as to where the bicycles should enter the store instead of on Main Street.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Gary. Anybody else want to address the council on something other than not on the agenda?
My name's Adam Pena. I live at 414 East 10th Avenue. Today, I'm here to speak to the council as well as everybody else here on behalf of the Grace Arbor Neighborhood. We have a meeting coming up. I'm sure you guys have been seeing some stuff on the Hutch Rec pages and the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative pages about the park that the neighborhood is working along with the Salvation Army to have built in that build, in front of the Salvation Army and behind Wendy's. So a quick little, I guess, update for those that don't know about this. Grace Arbor Neighborhood and the Salvation Army and the city have been discussing the possibility of a park since 2019. The neighborhood and Salvation Army have received grants from the Hutch Community Foundation last fall for benches and soccer goals, and the city has also received a grant to develop concept plans. Their, or Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday, July 9th, 6:30 at the Salvation Army, we're going to be having our third meeting. And as I have stated, I'm here to invite the city council out to that and hear what the residents have to say. The numbers of attendees have grown significantly over the last couple of months, and they're really getting excited about this project. And so again, we're here to invite you out as well as any of the other residents that would like to attend.
Thank you, Adam.
And just for one thing to share about that, we also are going to have pizza at that meeting to make it easier for families with children to come out. At our main meeting, we had a good number of children in attendance and got some good input from them at that meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning like to address the council? Mr. Finley?
Tony Finley, Hutchinson Recreation Commission. Just wanted to take this opportunity to invite the council and our community out to DCI Park on June 24th, so that's a Monday. There will be promotional materials coming out later today to let everybody know what's planned that day. But for almost a year, a group of organizations in town, the Hutchinson Community Foundation, Hutch Rec, Chamber of Commerce, United Way, Aging Projects, the Public Art and Design Council, and DCI have been meaning to think about how we can reimagine our spaces in our community. We've got, found a great partner with the folks at DCI and their park space in front, and so this is a kickoff to reimagining that space. Our goal is to really just make those spaces more inviting, where people can connect, and just a place for people. So looking forward to that. We will have more information at the kickoff meeting about future plans, but please come out and join us if you can. There will be food trucks, there's yard games, different interactive opportunities on Monday for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Hey, Tony. Tony, I've got a question for you. How does the food trucks get a hold of you? How do they say they can?
So, yeah, so they can just contact Jace Chambers at our arts and culture coordinator. We are scheduling two food trucks every Monday from 11 to 1:00, moving forward from the 24th.
Okay.
We'll be on a rotation basis, so we'll not be the same food trucks every Monday. Everybody will get an opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else would like to address the council? Be happy to hear from you. All right, hearing none. Next item, please.
Item number six, consent agenda.
I've reviewed the consent agenda and make sure everybody else has, and we probably should approve that.
I've reviewed it as well. Any questions?
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Faas.
Yes. Next item?
Item number seven, public hearing to consider establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district inside the city.
I'll need a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Faas.
Yes.
Good morning, council. Dave Satello, Director of Strategic Growth. So this is an important part of establishing an RHID district. Unfortunately, we don't have the documents that were supposed to come in front of you for approval for the RHID district, including the grant agreement and development agreement. So at this point, what we are asking you to do is if there are comments in the audience to, around the district, they can happen now in this public hearing. Otherwise, what we can do is ask you to continue the public hearing for the first month, first meeting in July. So that way, we've already published the public hearing and informed the community that that's happening, but we can continue that until that meeting. So at this time, you're welcome to take comments from the audience if there are any. Otherwise, we'll ask for a motion to move that to the first meeting in July.
Very good. Are there comments from the audience related to this item? Okay, I would ask for a motion to continue.
I have a question. If we do move it, will the next public, will the next hearing also be a public hearing that will allow for comment?
Yes, you can allow comments at the next one. All you're doing is extending it.
Okay.
So you're just extending the public hearing. It's still the same one essentially as the next meeting.
And will we go through the same process of the notification and publishing and all of that as well?
I don't believe so, but I can clarify that for you.
Because we're not obligated to do so?
We've already published.
Right.
The meeting is open now for the public hearing. Once that public hearing has occurred, started, and continued to the next meeting, this is the only notice that will occur.
Okay.
And so we will close the public meeting at the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Any other questions? Thanks, Stacy. I've called for a motion to continue the public hearing to July 2nd.
I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing to July 2nd, 2024.
I believe our first meeting is July 8th.
I think it's July 2nd.
Is it? It is July 2nd? I will not be here the 8th, then I'll be here on the 2nd.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Faas.
Yes. Thank you, council.
I have a question for you. What is the reason that we don't have those documents at this time?
Sure, so we want to make sure that we are on the same page with the developer, and part of that, there's a lot of terms that go as part of that contract, and so we want to make sure that it's a good deal for the developer, it's a good deal for the city. And part of that is a grant agreement and development agreement, and so we are working with our team to try to make sure we have something ready for you. The grant agreement from KHRC came in later than we expected, and so we're working on those documents to have those ready for you by that first meeting in July.
Okay. And moving the meeting back doesn't impact any of the grant timelines or any of?
No, at this time now, we're comfortable with that timeline change. There's other procedural things that need to happen, too. There's no plat established in front of the, that plat hasn't come in front of the Housing Commissioner, reviewed by the, I'm sorry, Planning Commissioner, reviewed by the Planning Department. There's just a lot of things that are still moving around, and we want to make sure those are ready before they come to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mary.
Item eight, ordinance and resolutions are none. Item nine, new business. A, consider the downtown Hutch master plan.
Hello, Matt.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Matt Williams, Director of Community Development. I'm excited to bring to you today for your consideration, adoption of the downtown Hutch master plan. This process, this planning process has involved countless hours from our community, several community engagement sessions, and passion from people all over, including what we heard this morning, that everyone has a passion for downtown Hutchinson. I included in your package the executive summary of the plan, the full plan can be found on our website. Today, I'll be going over a little bit about what is a downtown master plan, where the plan came from, and then what are some of the key projects and next steps that we'll be looking at. So what is a downtown master plan? Well, it's a high-level, long-range planning document used for policy decisions and to help guide policy. This plan is focused on the downtown area between Seventh Avenue to the north, Avenue D to the south, Poplar on the east, and Jefferson on the west. Like the comprehensive plan, the downtown plan has an emphasis on infrastructure, land use, and transportation, but the downtown plan also focuses on entertainment, tourism, and economic development. The plan is not a list of things that are guaranteed to happen. Right now, this is just a guide to help visualize what downtown should become in the future. It's a vision and a roadmap. It's more of a starting off point than a destination that, you know, this is. So why spend the time and go through this effort? Well, downtown has had a huge transformation over the last 20 years, and several of our planning efforts have seen great success. A lot of work has been put in by the community, including the former downtown Hutchinson Revitalization Partnership and now Downtown Hutch. And roughly the decade prior to this plan being put together, there had been 65 new businesses downtown, $21 million in public investment, and $70 million in private investment. So folks were understandably starting to ask, how do we keep up this momentum? What's the plan for the future look like? So the plan came about based on a call to action from a group of local leaders. The group reached out to those that had been part of Salinas' successful downtown master plan and began discussions with Olson, an urban planning and design consultant. So when it came to funding the plan, the City of Hutchinson agreed to pay half of the, half of what was needed, and the rest came from private citizens. A large portion of the funding of the plan was in memory of Mr. Downtown, Nation Meyer, who had a great passion for downtown and a love for the community. Other initiatives that contributed to the groundswell of support for this plan included the Chamber of Retail Gap Analysis. the Chamber's retail gap analysis, the Strong Towns discussions, the Community Foundation's invitation to the Community philanthropy innovators network, and much more. So Olson Studios was hired to help facilitate this plan, and it kicked off in early 2022. So to help guide this plan, a technical committee was put together that included residents and leaders with a stake in downtown. The process had four phases: discover, engage, plan, and refine. An evaluation was conducted to see what the current state of downtown was, and this included a market analysis, and then a list of opportunities and constraints was defined. Throughout the process, multiple engagement sessions took place. A website was hosted that had up-to-date information, and nearly 800 surveys were concluded. So all of the ideas that were gathered were then refined based on additional input. Throughout the discover phase of the planning process, a market analysis was conducted that reviewed economic and demographic trends. The market analysis shows that between 2023 and 2040, that population growth of roughly 3,000 people is expected. This will lead to an increase in between 280 and 530 jobs that will also result in the need for more retail office and housing. So these were positive signs that Olson and the group took that downtown can support additional growth. So thanks to the efforts of the technical committee and all of the public engagement, a vision statement was formed to describe the downtown Hutchinson of the future, and that's what's on the screen now. Downtown Hutch is a thriving and dynamic cultural hub at the heart of the community, home to vibrant retail, dining, entertainment, and business destinations, active indoor and outdoor spaces, downtown living, and community pride. So as you can see in the plan, the vision statement led directly to values, key issues, goals, and then strategies, and those are based on, well, the values that are in the plan are based on this vision, and those values include historic and cultural preservation, lively spaces, unified downtown brand, distinct but cohesive downtown districts, vibrant economy, connected community, business-friendly, full-time downtown, and diverse downtown. So the plan focuses on five key areas. They're up on your screen: land use, transportation, character in public spaces, programming and operations, and then economic health and vibrancy. For each of those focus areas, there are a list of key issues, goals, and strategies. The strategies are based on a unique set of circumstances and are developed based off of what has worked in other communities around the country, including those in Kansas. So I'm not going to detail every strategy, but understand that these strategies are just recommendations, just ideas. Likely not all of them will be pursued. One thing I've learned in planning is that everything in this plan, the only thing that's guaranteed to happen is that not everything will happen. So we'll just take it from here, and this is just a starting point. So for the first theme, land use and development, the land use and development strategies focus on the built environment. Land use and development are core principles that influence the composition of a downtown, and they shape the way a community evolves over time. So some of the strategies identified include establishing distinct downtown districts, protecting historic architecture, and encouraging mixed-use development. Transportation and mobility are critical to a downtown's ability to function and flourish. Some of the strategies that we've identified for that are enhancing the safety and connectivity of downtown walkability, creating unified plan for wayfinding, and improving connectivity from the west side of downtown from Avenue R. Critical to the identity of a downtown is its character in public spaces. The character and distinction of public spaces are pivotal to a downtown's sense of community and civic pride. Some of the strategies that we've identified are ensuring that new development, redevelopment, and infill is compatible with its surroundings, attracting and integrating the arts into downtown, and expanding the streetscape enhancements. There are a wide variety of systems, programs, operations, and efforts that contribute to the success of a downtown. Some of the strategies we've identified for the programming and operations category include establishing a distinct and unified downtown brand, fostering clear communication among downtown entities, and establishing longer operational hours among downtown retail businesses. And then finally, creating and sustaining a healthy economic ecosystem takes considerable forethought and an array of strategies that help to make a downtown distinct, diverse, and attractive. Some of the strategies identified include identifying downtown's market niche, cultivating a critical mass of dining and entertainment, and expanding the offerings of downtown attractions for all ages. One thing that the master plan also has is this map located on page six of the executive summary. This map identifies the existing assets downtown and lays out potential improvements. Some of these include potential monuments or gateway sites, locations for festival streets that could be used for events like Third Thursday or Smallville, potential future park locations, and suggested road and sidewalk improvements that we've already heard about today. This map will be just one example of something that will help us guide future decision making. So when we look at making improvements in downtown, we'll definitely reference this map. Finally, today, I wanted to touch on three projects that are mentioned in the master plan: Woody Street, Memorial Hall, and the landmark. These three projects have the potential to be catalytic for the future of downtown and dovetail really nicely with the strategies that are in the plan. The Woody Street improvements will introduce a new entrance into downtown and our community while presenting opportunities for gateway monuments and land for future development. Memorial Hall improvements would capitalize on several strategies, including historic preservation, leveraging our history, and offering downtown attractions for all ages. And the landmark offers the opportunity for adaptive reuse and the potential to introduce new living, retail, and restaurant space in our downtown. These projects located at kind of three distinct spots, you know, on the west, east side, and the north side of downtown, really offer the potential for a new era in downtown history and exciting future Hutchinson. So now that the plan has been drafted, the technical committee is continuing to meet. We meet at least a couple times a month through various groups. Action items that we are focusing on are based on the strategies, and we've split those into four different buckets: policy, protocol, placemaking, and partnerships. In each of those buckets, we have a subcommittee focused on making progress. And then our plan is, over the coming years, that as we make progress, we communicate that to the city council, to the community at large, so people understand. And it's a completely transparent process of what we're doing to make the city better. The project has been the result of meaningful collaboration with community partners, included all of the groups listed on the screen right now. So we really want to thank everybody that's been part of this process. You know, making progress on the future of downtown is going to take a whole community approach, and this is just the beginning, and we invite everybody to participate. So with that, planning staff is recommending that the downtown Hutch master plan be approved, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I know there's some people here that would like to speak about this, mainly in support, I think, but does the council have any questions for Matt?
No.
All right. Does anybody here like to speak to this master plan?
Good morning, council. Deborah Tufel with the Hutch Chamber in downtown Hutch. We have been a proud partner with the city around the work of promoting and marketing downtown since 2019. And in 2022, in this month, you'll recall, I came to the council to ask for some support for the downtown master plan, and you graciously provided half of the funding to allow for this plan to take place. Many other community partners have had a hand in raising funds for it and have walked this path with Olson. As Matt indicated, Olson Studios has presented a very detailed master plan that has a lot of elements that will be able to be implemented over the next few years. But it's truly been a collaborative work in process, and we couldn't do it without partners like you. So we appreciate all the work that the City of Hutchinson has dedicated to this and the faith you've had in being a part of the process and the faith you're going to have in in all of us collaborating to make sure this is successful. It was truly, when we interviewed several firms and selected Olson, we felt like Olson had the credentials and has done a lot of great things in communities that we aspire to continue to to be somewhat like or emulate. And so it's been a it's been a great partnership with Olson, and they are still working behind the scenes on an as-needed basis. So if there are elements of this master plan that you feel like we still need expertise, they didn't just dump us off with this plan. It's we can call on them when we need them. So in this last year, as you know, we have hired a full-time downtown manager, Sarah Diamond, and so Sarah will be working with the technical committee and the various subcommittees of this process. We appreciate the funding that you have allocated just starting in this January for full-time funding for that position, as well as continuing the promotion and marketing we're doing. So thank you for your vote of support for this plan, and we look forward to continuing to work with you as we go forward.
Thanks, Deborah. Anybody else?
Good morning. I'm Laura Meyer-Dick. I know most of you, and I just want to say thank you for the support. I'm kind of a crazy person who got this plan started in memory of my dad. He asked me to work on downtown before he passed away, and I didn't get it didn't get it done. I wish we were see was here to see the support and the collaboration that has come together between all the partners, because it has exceeded my wildest expectation. And so I look forward to seeing how getting these projects done, the three that Matt put up there, will get done. We're already starting on the design phase on the landmark. We've started working with the architect, and hopefully we'll have plans to bring forward to approve by fall. And so I think once that gets going, people will see that momentum. But my first meeting was with Deborah and Aubrey, and I said, let's do a downtown master plan. And they looked at me a little bit like I was crazy and said, that's kind of a big project. And I said, we can do it. We can do it. And really, all the all the community partners have come together, and I appreciate. Paul's been a great help, telling us which way we need to go with different things to get it approved and get things rolling. So I just wanted to thank the council for their support, and I'm excited to see what happens over the next few years.
Well, thank you for taking over a building that needed more than an absentee owner. And just so you know, as a building owner, there was somebody there at 6:30 this morning doing work, three trucks. And so if there is things happening. Hi, Sarah.
Hi. Good morning. Sarah Diamond, downtown manager with the Hutchinson Chamber in downtown Hutch. And I just want to say how grateful I am of your support, not only of the downtown master plan, but the support of my position. I had started with the Chamber a little bit over a year ago, part-time, and have transitioned full-time as of January 1 of this year as the downtown manager. So I'm thrilled this work was already underway, actually, before I began my role last April. And so I've since January, my full-time role have really dived in and have been working instrumentally with the technical committee and helping facilitate the work and execution of the plan. So I'm honored. It's a very exciting downtown or it's a very exciting time for downtown Hutchinson, and so I'm honored to be a part of that. And I just want you to know that we will be communicating this plan very extensively along the way. I've already been doing that work in many different ways. We've been doing press releases in the community, radio interviews, different commercials, different ways of informing the community. We'll be engaging the community along the way as well. So appreciate your, again, your support. And we've also, if you haven't seen, we've been doing achieving, working towards achieving some small wins. We had a placemaking event. Tony Finley with Hutch Rec talked about the placemaking happening. We had a placemaking event last week, and we had a presentation and a some time in the park as well, and also bringing in experts from Kansas Main Street to talk about design with our downtown district and really help our community members here in downtown Hutch with their buildings and with our structure. So we're already working towards some of this work that's in the plan. So thank you.
Morning, council.
Morning.
My name is Scott Brown, resident here in the City of Hutchinson, great vast district area. I I'm excited to see downtown development happening, a very important aspect of our community. I I do have a couple of comments, somewhat unrelated, but related maybe. I was excited when I saw this kind of pop up. I spent some time kind of going back to look at previous projects and plans that the city had hoped to implement. And going into the website, since it's been revamped in 2020, it almost appears as though the City of Hutch started in 2020. There's no archive of previous meetings that I could find anyway. They may be somewhere buried in there. But I find that those previous meetings are a really important tool when it comes to looking at where we've been, where we wanted to go, and where we have arrived to. And I think those are crucial elements when we start talking about a new master plan, to be able to go back and look at previous plans, see where the hits were, see where the misses were, and help that to inform our decision-making as we move forward. Somewhat related, maybe not so much, more to do with the website. While I was poking around looking, I tripped across a couple of things that I thought were pretty interesting. I thought the comment about $20 million in public investment was kind of eye-popping for me. The last article I came across was in 2019 from Hutchinson News. It talked about $7.6 million in public fund investment. Think that's important, that we make sure that those public funds are being used in an accurate sort of way, in a very beneficial way for the citizens of Hutchinson. Master plans are generally a way to grease the skids for public funds grant writing and that sort of thing. So that I would assume, and I'm sure the council would assume as well, that there's going to be some public fundraising for and for a variety of different things that benefit other private investors, et cetera. And as I'm looking through, just a couple of things off the top of my head, I think really important as you guys move forward is that accountability is hugely important, that we make sure that the things that are promised are the things that are delivered. I I looked at that $7.6 million in public fund investment, and the Wiley Building had a $2 million public investment for a parking garage that was promised to deliver 30% public parking. It delivers none. Just another interesting project that I thought was kind of alarming or eye-opening was the Stevens Building that was promised to be bed and breakfast. It depend on which article you looked at. It was gay spa, bed and breakfast. The article that I was looking at for 2019 mentioned that it was going to be apartments. In the end, what we got was a day spa and a residence for the building owner, and no clawback for any of the funds that were given to those individuals. I think that accountability is hugely important, to make sure that our investments as a as public are investments that are benefiting the majority of citizens in Hutchinson. I'm excited to see a lot of what I'm seeing of the park behind the Wendy's area. I think that's going to be a real exciting addition. It's kind of right in my neighborhood, so I enjoy that kind of stuff. The sidewalks that were mentioned earlier, $7 million would go a long way for some really nice sidewalks, or $2 million, when we lost a parking garage. $2 million could have been some really nice stuff for some parking lots. I think accountability is hugely important, and I think that as you guys move forward, and we are investing, and we are helping others who are investing, that we make sure that those monies that we send have provisions that hold those entities to account, to make sure that they're delivering the things that they have promised us. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Scott. I wasn't going to do this, but Jim, could you give a little bit of a history? Could you come to the podium and?
Pump it downtown.
Well, I wasn't going to do that, but I think Scott has some great comments, and I think he explained it well to the technical committee about this ongoing work and how long it's been going and how it's progressed and where we are today and all of that. So.
Yeah, Jim Saitnader, I was the former downtown development director for a number of years, and you're exactly right. Mr. Brown's right. Accountability is hugely important. And that's why, if you dig into those numbers, you'll find out that that $20 million was not only the City of Hutchinson, was the state of Kansas through street-stroke grants, federal dollars for the gas explosion going way back to those days. So we had to leverage, you know, monies as we could, and the City of Hutchinson was by far and away our strongest supporter of the original master plan that was done in 2000. It's called the Hyatt Palma. uh, are kind of being tweaked now, which is right, because this is the next generation of what our downtown should grow to and be. Uh, when we started in 2000, there were maybe 150 to 200 people living in the downtown area. That number today is somewhere north of 400, uh, depending on where you classify, you know, the boundaries. But there wasn't such a thing as the Hutchinson Lofts at 720 North Main. That was a derelict, rundown building. The Wiley Building stood, uh, empty for a number of years. Uh, the way to make the Wiley Building work was to help with the parking garage, because not only does that help the tenants and the folks in the Wiley Building itself, which are somewhat like, uh, public spaces, uh, but the key piece was the big piece in the middle that, uh, actually cut down on the amount of spaces we were hoping to be able to build, because the Fox Theater needed the space to be able to unload for performances and things. Uh, if you're not real familiar with the Fox, it has no wing space. It's very limited. It was designed as a Bobville stage. So, its capability, as compared to Memorial Hall, which has great wing space and set up more for those types of performances. But, um, there's agreements that had to be made, how the folks that did park in the structure get into the Wiley Building, and that was interconnected over the top of the Fox Theater. Uh, one of the projects I hope we see in upcoming years is utilizing those three stories of spaces up above the Fox Theater that's prime for, uh, redevelopment and reuse. But, the numbers that, uh, Mr. Brown was quoting was over a 20, 25-year period. We did streetscape work with assistance from.
Actually, that was in 2013, 2014. Uh, and now 2017.
In that, in that, in that timeframe, which was part of streetscape improvements from Third Street North to, uh, Fifth Street. Uh, so, we were, had partnership with the state over that 25 years, which started at the Avenue A Park. We then added streetscape, uh, from that area at C and Main, north to the railroad tracks at Third. Uh, we did the First Street, uh, improvements between Washington and Walnut. And then we, the timeframe you're speaking about was the last phase that we had done, which is from the railroad tracks at Third and North to Fifth Street, which is home to the Landmark Building. And, uh, one of the great things about, uh, what's happening today in this next phase is the fact that there's three major projects already moving down the road that look like they will happen. And as Matt said so well, they're catalytic kinds of improvements, and a lot of this is, is generational improvements. What you're going to approve today will lead to the next 20, 25 years of how downtown will continue to grow and fill in and, uh, just be a great place for the community.
How, do you have any suggestions on how we, meaning you, me, as a staff, can hold ourselves accountable? I mean, uh, communication?
Yeah, the, it, it really is all about communication. And one of the things, uh, in my long career, uh, with the city is we're so busy going from one project to the next, we rarely ever go back and grade it, as he suggested, you know, what was a hit, what was a miss. But, uh, I think we should all be proud that the work that started in the downtown went all the way to 30th Street. We've got one of the most beautiful main streets in, you know, central part of the country, I believe. And that all, uh, the ties from K-61 into downtown, there's elements at 30th and K-61 that match up to elements in the downtown area. So, that, that does take a lot of investment, a lot of time, and it did. But I am so excited about this new group, the leadership, and, uh, this, this plan's going to happen in five to 10 years, not 20 to 25.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I, I thought that some of that could be addressed by the institutional knowledge standing at the podium, so.
And I'll be happy to visit with Mr. Brown, you know, about questions and things, and try to bring more detail to his questions, if he wants to do that.
Okay. Well, we can't change the past, and we can't, all we can do at this point is take a look back and say, like he suggested, what's the hits and what's been the misses, um, and provide clarity to the public about where the funding did go, and the benefits and the long-term benefits and the public use that we've provided in, in those projects. But, at this point, um, assuming we move forward with the downtown master plan in the next vote, um, you know, that's our job to guide the, um, essentially the city communication strategy and the public, or the, um, new city manager to, and the chamber to tell people the story of the downtown master plan and what is working, what isn't working. Because one thing that I really appreciate about this plan, that, number one, it's taken two and a half years or so to get, to get it to this point. Um, it's incredibly flexible. Um, it relies strongly on, um, public and private partnership. Nothing in this plan is 100% moving forward just because the city wants it to. It's all going to require public input, um, and, um, you know, businesses buying into it as well and supporting it. And then after that, the proof's in the pudding. If it, um, you know, if people move down there, if people start, um, shopping more down there, um, if the business owners see a benefit and they change their hours, which is one of the things, um, built into the strategy. So, um, I think I appreciate the flexibility, but also the variety of the issues that this plan touches on, because as you talk to people about what's wrong with downtown, why don't they go down there more? Um, I think everything I've read in the strategy bullet points is mentioned. Um, and that's just something that I think took a, a great amount of forethought and effort, and, um, I appreciate not only the Chamber and Olson who worked on this, but also the public who showed up and, um, essentially provided input. I know I saw everybody here at some of those meetings where we said, you know, this works, this doesn't work, this section should focus on X, Y, and Z, this section should focus on the other things. So, um, the one thing that I think is missing, and I know Steve Garza will agree with me, is that this plan ends at D Street, and Main Street goes all the way to Cary Park. Um, so if we look at just that little chunk of town that is not, um, included in this plan, I think the goal is that it will be lifted up by this plan through increased, um, foot traffic. Um, the downtown master plan ends there, but by all means, if you have a business and you want to put it at D Street, you'd still see a benefit, I think.
Ms. Goss, I have plenty to say, but I'm waiting. I will have my say here in a minute.
Okay. Yeah. Um, and so I would hope that, you know, while, while we're not responsible for the council specifically bringing the businesses here, we are responsible for creating the, the environment that, um, encourages them to come. Um, and I think this is a big leap in the direction of providing the environment that brings more businesses to that section of South Main.
Yeah, I think it's important. I'm kind of glad you brought that up, because in the original master plan, there was the streetscape all the way to Cary Park, which I personally believe is extremely important because of the value and the great asset we have in Cary Park. And, uh, the connector between downtown and Cary Park is that portion of South Main Street. So, uh, and at a higher level, we've been talking about how we can bring those connections together, because those are, uh, investments that you all would be involved in making most of those decisions. So.
And as we've invested in Cary Park with the bike path, um, and I know that there are other things on the wish list for, in the CIP for the future, but it just seems like ending the plan at D Street, um, duh, it, it disconnects you from Cary Park. So, if you're up there having lunch or whatever, and then you wanted to wiker, walker, like, walk or bike down to the, um, into Cary Park and do everything that's offered down there, um, it's a challenge to do so, because we didn't invest in the sidewalks for that strip of town, and we didn't invest in the lighting for that strip of town. And, um, so I was really, I encourage you guys to, um, keep that conversation going, because I think it's, it's crucial to connect Main Street all the way to Cary Park.
Well, I can promise you, we have and we will continue that kind of look to the big picture of our future, because these are what I consider, and we learned from our friends in Salina, as generational type investments. And they will carry 20 or 25-year history. I think it's important, this morning, we've heard about Smallville, we've heard about Third Thursday. Those happened back in 2012, 2011. So, the idea kind of gets under my skin every so often, but the idea that downtown is in bad shape and, you know, hasn't happened, I, I really question that line of thinking. The other piece that's really important that Olson was very complimentary of and, uh, strongly suggested we keep, is our historic preservation. And if you remember what a lot of the buildings looked like over the past 20 years to where they look like today, that, to me, has been a huge key. Uh, my last point is the Stevens Building was brought up. That was not City of Hutchinson dollars. That was state dollars through the downtown, uh, rehabilitation program that you just heard at the last meeting, we're working on for 14 North. So, the public funds, as stated, came from many different pots, many different ways, and that's the way we have to, to work on it. But that's, those monies were designed to fix the problems with that building, so the building lasts another 20, 25 years. So, regardless of the use of the building, that building has had tuck-point work, new windows, electrical plumbing. That's the purpose of that money. So, uh, I, I thought that was important to point out also.
I appreciate that.
Can I talk?
Certainly.
Okay. And Ms. Goss, you're correct. My problem is this, we have done the downtown a lot. This might be the second time we've redone it. I was a little disappointed that the South End wasn't included, but I do understand that we only can afford so much at a time. We talk about accountability. Us five do have accountability to South End of Town. They're also taxpayers. They're waiting patiently, and of course, they're on to me, which is they should be. I'm, me and Mr. Fast, as they're representative, well, all of us, so they're representative. And they're waiting, paying their taxes, and doing what they're supposed to do, but they belong to the city. They belong just like everybody else, and they belong to having a nice downtown. Now, I do understand in the South End of Town, there's not very many businesses down there. There's only a couple down there that I know of. Of course, they happen to be my relatives, but I'm fighting for everybody. They need to have something down there to say that's theirs, even if it's just redoing their sidewalks and adding lighting. Do something for them. Remember they're taxpayers too. They are, our city limits does not stop at D Street. Our city limits go clear all the way to the bridge or farther than that. You have to remember that. These are citizens of the City of Hutchinson too. But I'm not going to have a rain on this. I think this is great. I think that's what we're here for, is to make Hutchinson better. Let's make it better for everybody. And all it is, takes is just to put downtown lighting down there and do a little bit for them to attract the business to come down there. I know the buildings are, are dilapidated on some of them, but we got to help them. Their tax, we misunderstand, they're taxpayers too. They live down there and pay their taxes just like everybody else. They go down there and pay their water bill, and they pay their taxes. We have to remember they're citizens too. You have to remember, the city limits does not stop at D Street. Where you got responsibilities for those taxpayers as much as we got anywhere else, the west, the south, the east. I hope the city council, we can do something for them, even if it's just a little bit. I, I'm here to 2008. I tried to help them and tried to help them, but all I can do is speak for them. I go down there and talk to them all the time, and they say, "When are we going to get anything? This is the second time the downtown's been revitalized. When are we going to get revitalized?" So, you have to remember that the, 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 the city limits does not stop at D Street. It's, it's going to clear down to Cary Park. They have to walk and sing the apolitized streets. I know everybody's got the apolitized streets, but we have to remember they're citizens too. And I hope us five can remember that and try to get a plan for just the South End of Town. Now, it's not going to cost as much as it does this side of town, but if you redo the South End of Town by lighting, by benches, by a little bit, they will come. That's what I told my brother-in-law, when he built that liquor store, and he built that, that, uh, I'm not just talking to you, I'm talking to everybody. I bet I focus on you. It's like, you know, he focuses on a man that's naked in the street. You're not naked, but, but anyway. I told him they will come, and yet we have not proven to him. He tells me all the time, he stands in the middle of the street and says, "Where are they at, Steve?" And that's, 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 I invited him down here to Hutchinson, Kansas, said, "This is the place to live." But we yet to helped him or get more business down there, or whatever. I'm just saying that I think this is great. I think this is great that we keep helping our, revitalize our new downtown and keep it up, like that gentleman says, "We got to keep up on our investment." If the streets and the sidewalks are messing up, sidewalks like him, we got to keep our investment up. But also, the South End of Town is an investment, and they live there too. So, I hope we can go on from here and remember that, that, that the city limits does not stop at D. Once those people quit paying taxes from being, "You ain't helping me, why should I pay taxes? We be in a heck of a mess." And my job is to speak for them. We got to do something for them.
And I, I appreciate, totally agree, and that's a connection to the Cary Park that's probably one of our community's greatest assets, and that.
You know what, Mr., I'll tell you something. During these meetings we had, during these meetings I had, I tried to encourage all those people to go to those meetings that we had at Convention Hall, it was done very well. But you know what they told me? "Why should I go? They ain't going to do nothing for us. They ain't going to give us no money." And now I hear, "I told you so." What'd I tell you, brother? They ain't doing nothing for us. We pay taxes, they don't do nothing. Why should I go to the meeting? Well, we got to change that. Even if it's a little thing, streetlights, sidewalks, whatever it is, we got to remember, those are people too. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Yeah, well, it's your meeting, and, and I appreciate your passion, and, uh, I can personally promise you that the big picture look, uh, definitely would include that improvements to connect downtown to the park.
Thank you, Jim.
Natasha Russell, um, do I have to give my address or anything like that?
No, it's fine. Hutchinson.
Hutchinson. Uh, I've been before you guys before, uh, so maybe you kind of know what I'm going to say, but I just feel like it's so germane to this conversation about the downtown master plan and, uh, the concerns that we've heard raised, the impassioned presentation that we just heard from one of our council members. Uh, and, uh, and I feel like it's worth pointing out that, uh, to the developers of the master plan, certainly to you all, uh, to the city in general, that one of the ways, and perhaps the most important way, to make sure that everyone in the city understands why it's important to invest in all of its citizens, is for everyone's story to be part of the story. So, I'm talking about, you, you, I've heard the phrase, uh, the big picture being mentioned, and like, uh, kind of historical references going back to a certain number of years, but what I'm talking about is the big picture of Hutchinson, its entire history, and all of the contributions that have been made to the City of Hutchinson by every distinct community that lives in Hutchinson. And, uh, most of the time, I don't hear that being referenced when I hear about big plans and, you know, uh, things that are. and all of the contributions that have been made to the City of Hutchinson by every distinct community that lives in Hutchinson. And most of the time, I don't hear that being referenced when I hear about big plans and, you know, things that are being done to help revitalize this town. I have a sense of the, kind of the flight from downtown that occurred and the attempt to take it out, take business elsewhere in terms of like developing over toward maybe the mall, just as an example. But my main point here is that I really think that it would behoove everyone who's involved in trying to develop and improve Hutchinson to remember everybody's history and actually talk about it so that everyone feels like they have a stake and that they will come to meetings. I totally get what Mr. Garza is saying about why should I even come? These are people with their own vested interests and they're gonna get their money some kind of way and we're not gonna see any benefit from it where we live and where we need improvements and so forth. So I'm just kind of begging you to pay attention to the history, actual history of everyone who belongs, because we do belong. Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha.
Natasha, I want to say, one of the things that I've seen incorporated in downtowns and in other areas throughout other cities as I've traveled and even still here in Hutch, there's plaques on buildings, you know, that tell former uses and historical events that happened there. And so if you have any input, because I know you're a historian and you have such wonderful things all in your head to share. If you know things that, you know, we could commemorate on a plaque or we could essentially commemorate elsewhere or in another way, I just encourage you to bring that to the council or to the chamber and let us know. There are a lot of stories, even just like, I don't know what building it was, but my grandma used to tell us that they would, there was a dance hall downtown and it was separated and white people and black people and they couldn't dance together. And just real interesting stories that, that's only two generations ago. And that's, those are stories that as these buildings are redone and remodeled and repurposed and reused, like those stories are gonna get lost. And so we do need to preserve those stories because they're a crucial part of our history. And so if you have any ideas, please be willing to share those with us.
All right. Well, anything else?
I move to accept the downtown Hutch master plan.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
I'm gonna accept this because my job as a city councilman is to move the city forward, but I do hope everybody listens to what I have to say. We all have investment in there, even the south end. With that, I'll say yes.
Negers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item nine B, information session seeking input and guidance on the proposed traffic calming policy.
Took me a second to know what that was.
Just our little owl.
Who?
Good morning. My name is Brian Clinton. I'm the director of Public Works. The engineering department receives numerous requests each year and complaints regarding traffic in residential areas. To better evaluate and determine the need to improve those areas with traffic calming, to kind of slow that speed down or reduce the traffic volume, JEO consultants worked with assistant staff to develop a comprehensive traffic calming policy. And Brad Shores with JEO is here to go over that policy with you and get some input from you.
This is Brian. Brad Shores, JEO consulting group. So when a citizen says cars are going too fast down my street or I have too many cars going down my street, what is kind of the engineering response? And that's a field that's really started about thirty years ago and I think is still growing and developing, but it is pretty mature at this point. It's called traffic calming. So traffic calming in lay terms is simply techniques used to get drivers to drive slower or perhaps to get fewer cars onto that particular road. And so why a policy? I'm gonna give you two reasons, tell you a story and then walk through the policy. So one reason is you can imagine that many communities in Hutchinson, I'm sure is no exception. Many people feel like they have too many cars on the street and they're driving too fast. And so it's actually fairly easy for Hutchinson and for engineers to measure that, get real data. And oftentimes, the speeds and the traffic volumes are normal for that functional class of street, for that type of street. And so a policy gives the engineering department a tool to respond in kind and say, unfortunately, you know, you have the normal speed, the normal volumes on your street. And it's just, it's a way to make sure we're treating everyone the same, to the same practices. The second reason is what happens when, it's the other answer, what happens when there is a complaint and some engineering, some simple engineering evaluation is done and cars are traveling too fast down your street or you have too many cars traveling down your street or a combination of the two. So this policy helps implement the solution after that. And so there's a process here and I'm gonna walk through it, but I want to give you a hypothetical story first. A community, there's two complaints about speed and volume on their street. And so the city implements corrective traffic control measures. And then now two dozen citizens on the street say, what is this you've done to my street? We hate this. This is much worse. What's going on? Why did this happen? And so communities have learned that adopting a policy and working through this will help, help us get to the place we need to be. So here's a policy. We drafted a, we drafted a policy. City staff has reviewed it. And it is based on what has been successful for many other communities of similar size to Hutchinson in the Midwest. And the policy is simply this. So if a complaint happens, we do the engineering evaluation. The city has the capability of reporting that data with equipment they already have. So it's not a heavy lift to do that evaluation. We look at it from an engineering perspective. If the speeds and or volume and the combination are normal, we'll respond and say, unfortunately, speed and volume's normal. We're happy to look at this in the future again, but right now for your type of street, this is normal traffic behavior. If the criteria is met to look at traffic calming, and that's outlined in the traffic calming policy we've developed, the next key step, this is a very important step, the engineers, the city staff will define what's called the area of impact. And so that can, that's very contextual, depends on the circumstances, but let me give you an example. Speed and too much traffic on one particular street. We may implement traffic calming on that street and that pushes the problem to a parallel street. And so we will define the area of impact as both of those streets for this one project because it's not fair to just push this problem over and then we're repeating the same process. So we identified that area of impact and like I said, you know, it's an intersection, it's just contextual. So we're gonna evaluate that using engineering principles. Here's a key component and really probably the main reason I'm here today. So after we identify the area of impact, we're not going to go forward with introducing traffic calming measures until two-thirds of the frontage owners agree that they would like to explore traffic calming. So it would probably be upon the citizens that brought the initial complaint to go get two-thirds signatory. Two-thirds of the signatures from the frontage owners of the identified area of impact. And now we know that there's a group, you know, relatively a group consensus that we want something to happen. We agree this is a problem and we're not making two people happy while upsetting, you know, the majority of the others. So frontage owners, just a quick definition there, we've kind of decided that, I'm gonna just make a hypothetical here just to try and help communicate this. Let's say the street only had ten apartment complexes. We're not looking for the signatures from every unit within every apartment complex. We're gonna be fine with two-thirds of the building owners. So in that case, we'd only need seven signatures to move forward rather than trying to get maybe more transient people, a lot more people to sign on. We're just looking for the business owners or residential owners along the frontage of the area of impact. So if we get that two-thirds, we go through a public engagement process. We've talked to the community about the different measures out there and there are a lot of measures out there. I'm not going to waste your time today talking through all of those measures. But we explore those measures. Some are good for certain situations. We'll talk to the community about that. And then we'll implement temporary traffic calming. And then we evaluate it. Was it effective from an engineering perspective? If it wasn't, we're gonna implement something else. We're gonna keep working until we solve the problem. When, as from an engineering perspective, we determine it was effective, we go back to the city, to the, sorry, the area of impact, do you guys like this result? And if they hate it, then we're gonna say, all right, now we've got something that's working. If you guys want us to keep exploring this, we can pick up the temporary. We're gonna need two-thirds again. If you guys are good with this, we're gonna make it permanent. And so the, I hope I said that clearly. So if they're happy with it and we put in the temporary, we're gonna make it permanent and it's all done at city cost. And we do want to have a conversation about budgeting for this. If we put in the temporary and they just hate it for whatever reason, okay, do you still want us to keep going through this and try something else? Because we did find something that works and we're gonna ask for a two-thirds amendment again at that point. That there's two-thirds of people that still want to walk through this process. It is an effort upon the city. And so there's a strong public engagement process here and the other communities have kind of learned through negative experiences that this has been a very helpful addition to the traffic calming policy. So when it becomes effective and the community, the area of impact agrees it was effective, we make it permanent. And that's basically it. And so we're not asking for you to adopt a policy. We can adopt it as a department, but we do not want to adopt this in a vacuum. There's a strong political and public engagement component here, so we absolutely want your impact, your input. We can revise our draft and we want to make sure we're educating you on what we're suggesting implementing. And then the, maybe Brian can come back up and we can talk about the funding as well.
I have several questions, one being what about comparable cities? Do most cities have this policy? And I do like the idea of it because it seems like right now we're just doing whack-a-mole with, you know, hey, come tell us what's wrong on your street, you know, and this would help, I think.
And I've got two guys, if technology is working, we've got two traffic engineers online. I know there are a number of communities. So we looked at Leewood, we looked at Lincoln, we looked at about five communities. Lawrence of comparable size to Hutch. Most, I don't know if the answer is most, but it seems like communities of Hutchinson size and larger are seeing the value in adopting these policies.
I have some reservations in, and I'm thinking through this, reservations in how it's qualified for moving forward in regards to contacting two-thirds of the property owners on the frontage. It's a lot of effort for someone to do that. It's not really consistent with who might be using the road. If it's a property owner that owns an apartment complex, doesn't live there, doesn't ever travel there.
Right, right.
I would, for sake of making things simpler, I would think of something more along the lines of, we're looking at doing a change in the neighborhood and put signage in the affected area for that people drive, they can contact either through see click fix or some other method to where we can collect, hey, we've had thirty people reach out to us. They would like us to engage in some type of traffic calming that actually use this road. Especially if it's a neighborhood with like a park. People go to the park on a regular basis, may not live there, but they like to utilize the park. It's for people that actually use the road or involve in the road rather than people that own the property that may never even be around at all. And it takes away some of that effort and onus on the people that are making the claim to say, now I've gotta, I've gotta go around and figure out who the owners are and get them to sign or agree to. Two-thirds of them in this area, and I'm thinking of the example we had at the last meeting, which could be a mile-long strip with two roads.
Right.
And it's, that's gonna turn into, well, the city doesn't care enough, I can't go do this. City doesn't care. I think placing some signage, temporary signage with a number or a see click fix link for people, we can actually gather the information and see, okay, it's reaching a certain point of saturation, it's worth going to the next step.
Yeah, that's good. And if Pat or Steve and they're on, they can chime in. You see the tension of like, we don't want to implement a change if only two people are requesting.
Absolutely.
How to get to that.
But I want it to be with people that actually use the road or impacted by the road traffic. I'm just throwing that out.
No, it's good.
Could be a better solution.
I don't have a firm answer for you now, but I appreciate that input.
So say you go through this process and we approve this or whatever. And say it takes ten two-thirds signatures to get to a point of where they agree. How costly is that from a city perspective? How much are you gonna spend to get to that point to figure this out?
Just through the public engagement?
Yes.
I mean-
Is it gonna be pretty minimal or?
Because we are pushing the onus upon the stakeholders to generate this. So the effort to go do the speed study and then to evaluate the area of impact, relatively minimal.
We have a process in place already when residents petition the city for something, we have a process to verify those petitioners, right? I know there are things that can be petitioned.
We have benefit districts and these kind of things.
Right. So we have a process in place already to verify and say these were in fact the right owner and this was the right person. Because you know, if you knock on the door and say, hey, will you sign this, someone might sign it, but they're not the owner.
Right. And I don't know if Brian, where is Brian? There he is.
He ran away.
Jim's been doing the benefit district stuff, so I don't know exactly how that works.
Yeah, so our city clerk can verify the property owners and make the petitions accurate.
I mean, I'm all for having a process that's planned and then figuring out what the funding's gonna be. I just want to make sure that the trigger to actually move forward is, one, achievable. And two, is it too much, too labor intensive to where it's not even gonna be implemented at all?
I mean, typically I gave the example of ten apartment complexes, as you can imagine. I think the typical example's gonna be residential streets. And the beauty of that system where you're getting two-thirds, first off, you're not putting the cost on city staff to go track down two-thirds of people on there. And then you're kind of pre, you're kind of pre-public engaging. Like, is there a consensus? And some leadership is gonna naturally form and you're going to have, you're going to kind of kickstart the process. So when you do go meet with them after they've agreed, some of that has already been worked out. So there's some advantages there. We can certainly go back and kind of pick the bucket on, because there are different ways to skin the cat here.
Well, and there would be neighborhoods where more than a third may be landlord rental situation.
Right.
And some of the housing may not, would maybe vacant, if we're counting full housing, it's gonna be hard to get that two-thirds.
Right.
And what it's, the area is huge. Like if you're talking about hypothetically a one-mile strip of Thirtieth Street and that's the part that would be the work, but the area of impact is, you know, a couple blocks on a couple of different side streets and whatever. That would be a huge project to say, okay, resident, you have to, you need to go get all of these.
Well, the area of impact comment's really important because we see that with other people where if you're gonna, for example, the discussion on Thirtieth Street between Main and Monroe, if you're gonna make these changes, it's gonna force more traffic on the block north and the people that live there are already feeling that traffic when they're walking the neighborhood. So people don't think about how it just kicks the can to another street when they're talking about these things.
We have a scenario just like that in my area, like a panorama which is a mile long. And that's gonna, what's probably gonna happen is we just put people over to Lakeview and do the same thing. So I mean, I'm kind of looking at this as the perspective that you- So I mean, I'm kinda, kinda looking at this as the perspective of the community members I've been talking with already. That how that would, how that would transpire, and how long the process, I mean, how long the process would that take to get to that point? I mean, I know you have to have that community involvement from those members in that street. Um, but I mean, how long could that take to, from start to finish, to come to an agreement of what should be implemented?
So complaints made, I think we can have, you know, pretty easily within, let's say, a month, just, just to say, an, an engineering evaluation of area of impact, and say, yes, we, we'd like to go forward. Then however long it takes them to get to two thirds, so, you know, whatever that is, and then the public engagement can happen within the next month. Um, so I, I don't think it's like we're waiting a year, but, but there's gonna be a deliberative process here, and educate them in a month, implement in the next month or three, I would think, depending on what solution was chosen. And then we need to give it, you do need to give it some time for the traffic to experience this. And we're not gonna go measure the data the day after it's implemented. We're gonna let it go for at least two to three, two to three weeks. Kind of recheck the data, and then get a feel for them. So it's, it's a months-long process.
My opinion here is, we're making it harder for the general public to interact with us as a council. You know, I didn't say much when you were talking about the south end, but this is a good example of, people, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do this. If they have a concern, they can always come to us, but if they have to do all of this, I mean, I guess, if you're in good, if you're in government, it might be less that you have to deal with, because nobody'll do it, but that's not what we want. Um, does that make sense? Am I, am I...
The play devil's advocate, you said that we're playing whack-a-mole, and if we don't have a process...
We are, that's the struggle I'm, I'm having here.
Then we can't make a long-term, five-year plan for, okay, this year, we're gonna do this section, that, next year, we'll do that section. It makes it hard to prioritize and outline what those projects even are, when they're coming up every once in a while, and we're just gonna address it, but we didn't have, it wasn't budgeted. So how do you address something that wasn't budgeted? And then, I think, I, I see...
Well, I, I, that's a separate issue, in my opinion. What I'm having trouble processing is, are we creating something that will make it harder for the public to interact with us? I don't want to do that. I, 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 I don't like reacting all the time. I, I will agree. But I, you know, I might ask Brian, how, you know, when we react? I mean, you seem to be able to react, and we get with, with J E O or whatever. Is, is it just not working?
So, the important part out of this policy is establishing a criteria. When would a street qualify to implement some of these traffic calming policies? So with that comes a large staff time investment, consultant time investment, which, and, you know, which is money, right? And so, making sure that that area is on board with that investment that the city's gonna make in that neighborhood, I think is critical. And that's where that petition piece comes into play. The majority of that area of impact is invested and interested in solving this issue. It's not just a one-person issue. This is a majority neighborhood issue that they want us to address.
You bring up a good point. Maybe there's a better way than trying.
I would like to utilize and leverage our C Click Fix program for something like this to gather, uh, information to reach a certain threshold before we make investment further. There could be other things to consider too, such as recent developments in the area that might be, hey, obviously, you're gonna see more traffic because they put a development, or nothing against those, but, a new development, and now there's more retail traffic, so it increases traffic. There could be other factors to take into consideration, but for the pure aspect of it, in regards to people that actually live, operate, use that street, those are the people we should be gathering information on in regards to if they feel like it qualifies. Because, and I say this, if, if I own four houses on a, on a street in another community where people are renting, and someone emails me or contacts me, I don't care. I mean, I mean, that's how, that's how a lot of people will do. It doesn't impact me personally, because I don't live there, but I own three houses that I rent out to people that operate, have their kids on that street. That's where I'm concerned, is it needs to be people that utilize the street that weigh in on it. It's, because they, they take access to it.
That's right. Well, I think this, if we have a number of people come to our city council, I mean, it must be a problem. And when they come and they dress us, this is the only way they're gonna get, maybe one person won't get something done, but when you have a lot of people, like we did the last meeting, a couple people coming there, then we have a problem. Then we gotta pay attention to that problem. Why is this group of people here? I like your idea by putting signage up. If you see that, to contact, whatever we do, um...
Slow your roll, Hutch.
Yeah, and, 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 and there's a problem. Once we have people come to the meeting in groups, there's something wrong. When we on C Click, we only have one person call, okay, but once we have people come to the meeting, we gotta look at the problem. And I like your idea about putting signage up and start calling in, and see how much, how much interest we can do. Like you said, if people don't care, they'll say, I don't care about that, the sign goes by, I don't care. But we do need to look at things when people come here and say we have a problem.
Yeah, you know, one thing we've done with, like, a water line, with people that petition for water sewer line, is when there's been that interest, we've hosted a public meeting to gauge that interest. And at that meeting, we pass around the petition. Are you interested in us pursuing that? And that helps that one or two people that have that issue, um, helps them, you know, gather that, that information, engage that interest of the community as a whole. So that might be a way to, to help those citizens that are bringing that issue forward, uh, to, to gather input amongst the, the rest of that community.
Well, we wait for them to come tell us. That's not a changed city council. I always told people, we listen. So when you do put out a petition, you listen, and you did something about it. Now I wanna know more about, you give people more opportunity to, oh, I can sign a petition and get something done. That's a changed city council, which would be...
Yeah, and I want that, but I don't want somebody that feels like there's a problem, that doesn't have the means or the ability to figure out who the neighbors, who owns the property, to, to go gather. You know, it seems like a lot of work that some people won't put in.
But when we do, when we do the process, whether we gather petitions, like you said, at a city council, whatever, then, then the city's doing the process.
But what the, the policy says, you as a, as a homeowner, if you've got a problem on your street, you gotta do all this and then come to us. My point is, will, will it lower public engagement with us? I, 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 I'm concerned that we're gonna make it too hard for people.
You know, we, the Forty-third and Halsted, you know, I kinda look at this example as, like, a month ago, um, we brought that up at a meeting. Uh, just because I had community members reach out, and they reached out to you as well. So, bring that up as a concern. And then, in five weeks, we have a sign up there on Forty-third and Halsted saying, slow down before the stop sign. This is not gonna fix the issue, but it's us being reactive to a community member reaching out and go, hey, this is an issue. And us doing our job as going, we need to fix this. So I think the community members, we know that we're available for them. I think that they'll be more willing to reach out. Um, I mean, because I email back anybody that contacts me, I call them back.
I agree.
And I helped them figure those things out, because that's, that's what I'm supposed to do.
Right.
Um, so I think we...
I agree. I'm not, I'm, I'm agreeing a hundred percent. I don't wanna make it so hard that people won't reach out to us if they, you know, if they have a concern.
Do you like the flexibility of not having a strict policy?
Yeah, I, I mean, I really do, and if, and, and I'm kinda with you. I think if it inhibits people from contacting us, going, oh my gosh, this process is way too troublesome to get through.
Once again, the city won't help us.
Right.
You know, I think, um, Enrico, I know you know a lot about C Click Fix, and it seems like this is something that, not to use it as a strict way of communication for this issue, but I know that we can customize the, the number, or the complaints that you can select on there, or the issues that you can select on there, and it seems like if, if trap, I don't, maybe traffic is one of them, but it seems like if we're driving people to C Click Fix, then that could be in there. And they could select that they drive that route, they live in that route, or, you know, what their main contention is. Like, it's a traffic issue, or it's a speed issue, or it's a, there's no stop sign, or what have you. You can, you can see it for all sorts of issues, but I don't recall that being one of them that we can collect, or that might be.
I'm not sure if it captures the address of the person who calls C Click Fix.
It does if you have an account, and you're not doing it anonymously.
So, again, how do you deal with them on the, on the, on the plan?
You know, I, I've, I've gotten C Click Fix, and I've submitted it myself and anonymously, and, like, there was a stop sign over here that was blocked by a tree. You couldn't see it until you were right on top of it. So I submitted it anonymously. There's no, there's a, a deal where you can put it in there for street signs, but I had to kind of make up what I wanted to submit, and within, like, less than a week, it was taken care of. So I mean, it, I, I think we've got some good systems in place. We just need to expand on those, uh, to help that community when they go into C Click Fix, go, oh, there's that. Because if you get to too complicated, then they're like, I don't mess with it, then just move on.
Yeah, and we have, there's a limited number of items that we can submit through the app versus the website. Um, I use it.
Nothing's stopping us, if someone called us or reached out to us that may not be familiar with C Click, to, hey, I'm just, to help gather information for this one cause, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit on, at, on their behalf for this area. Just so we can gather, okay, there's four, five, six, seven complaints on this particular item. We can, we can hone how to do this. I think it's just, we wanna have a, uh, more effective way of reaching that threshold before we put the money into actually doing the traffic study, um, and how we gather that information from our community. I think that's where we're at. I don't think, I don't, is the question in regards now, is the question, do we have an issue with having a policy agenda?
So this is not an action item?
No, it's not. I think it's a discussion item, and, and I think the question is, do we have, just what you said. I don't think any of us are opposed to having a policy. We just need to have one that, that works for us and that allows for community engagement.
Yeah, so we have heard very clearly, let's not have something that's so high a barrier for public engagement, but something never happens. Uh, one thought is, if we left it as it was, and after six months, you know, or three months, and, and you guys were hearing, hey, they've tried, this is not working, we can fix it then. But I think we can certainly come back and, and think through how to engage this process we already have, and does that lead to a public engagement meeting? And then, do we have enough signatories at that point to believe that the community really is behind it? So I think that's pretty good direction for you guys. And then, if we could, just a few minutes, uh, can we talk about the budgeting component?
Wait, uh, do, do you have something, Tony, you'd like to interject here on the implementation, implementation? Yes, come on up.
Thank you. Um, definitely appreciate the, the conversation and, um, the want-to to have a policy that, you know, that streamlines, um, you know, what, what that looks like as you're trying to solve those problems. Um, don't necessarily have a, a solution. I would just put out there that, um, when you're looking at, you know, the gentleman said, engineering perspective, a, a lot of times, you know, what about place perspective or resident perspective? And when you're starting from a design with white streets, no sidewalks, it, it creates that, um, that speed where, where, you know, motorists are comfortable. And so your engineering studies are always gonna tell you that the speed is acceptable, because they're rating it on a design of the street. But maybe that design of the street doesn't fit that particular neighborhood anymore. And so what I would suggest, and I don't know, don't have a solution, uh, today, but there needs to be more conversation about how we take that into account, that maybe the initial design of what we were doing is not correct. And, and how that's affecting people and residents in, in that place. Uh, we all want every neighborhood in our community to feel like, uh, they're proud from, you know, of living in that neighborhood, and they're proud to be from there. And, and so, uh, street design is a huge part of that, and street maintenance is a huge part of that. And so, um, I would just offer that maybe we need to not take such a technical look at it, uh, maybe allow for some adaptive work in, in what those residents, um, are living real life versus what a technical engineering study says. So, just wanted to put that out.
Thank you.
Tony, Doc, it's a really good point. Um, so you mentioned panorama. Panorama does qualify under this requirement. So in our engineering opinion, this is a street that for its functional class is experiencing a combination of too high speeds and too much volume. So we, we believe that from a technical perspective, this is a street we should take action on. And, and I, I hear the point, and, and we do, we're human, we always look at context. But if we throw away the engineering entirely, now we're being whack-a-mole reacting, and we're, we're trying to implement stuff on every single street in, in Hutchinson, because everyone's gonna say their street is experiencing too high-speed traffic. So there's an example where we, we do believe we need to take, take action there on panorama, or that action is warranted from an engineering perspective. I do wanna, just because you said this earlier, Mr. Mengers, um, things like, uh, things that are already working, this doesn't affect that. So like, when there are safety issues, site distances, intersections that need to be looked at, if there are crashes and a crash history, this has nothing to do with that. We're gonna continue to look at those responsibly every time we're, we're notified about them. This is strictly for, we really don't have a crash history, but the citizens feel too much speed, too high speed, too much traffic, what do we do about it? This creates a policy for that specific situation. And then, can we talk about budgeting?
Yeah, so, um, this policy does create, um, some need for funding in order for us to address these issues successfully. And if we get to the point where there's enough interest within that community, or that area of influence, area of impact, um, that they want to move forward with the traffic calming study, and the temporary measures and the permanent measures, we're looking just for the study alone, roughly fifty thousand dollars. And then, if we go through the temporary control measures and go through, you know, permanent installation of some of these measures, we're thinking about fifty thousand dollars on that. And that's all dependent upon size, so it may be less, it may be more. It just depends on the size of that area of impact. And right now, we do not have any money budgeted to address these issues. So, um, threw out three ideas in, in the memo, um, but just wanted to make sure that the, I guess we are looking for a little bit of input from the council on how important this is, uh, from a funding perspective.
The main toss is the actual implementation of the temporary and permanent, like the engineering evaluation we could do under the systems that we have, the data analysis we could do, but it's actually implementing, we're gonna do that work.
Yeah, and I would think even the, the public engagement is, you know, is a, fairly time-consuming.
I would say an argument could be made to budget this, because the higher traffic counts and speeds will continually give us issues in regards to maintaining the streets and the wear and tear. And two hundred thousand dollars doesn't amount to a hill of beans on the entertainment of every inch of street. Even though it's more of a hypothetical, I think you could see that it could be those funds paying off themselves in the long run.
Where have these funds come from? In the past, when we wanted to do a traffic study and needed engineering work, where, what has shifted in the budget to make this happen before?
Well, we've really not done any traffic calming studies, um, you know, so the, the initial studies that we've done on panorama, you know, those are done a lot internally, or under the, just that kind of service agreement that we have with G and W. So covered within our, our line item budgets, or our operation budgets.
So what is, okay, so what does a study like that cost us as a city versus what we're looking at?
So that's where that fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars comes into, if you go through the full-blown evaluating that area of impact, identifying what some of those traffic calming, the best traffic calming measures, how often you need to space them, that's where we need that engineering analysis done, and then installing those temporary measures, funding the replacement of those, funding those and replacing those, and then continuing that evaluation process.
What was the process, and I don't know what year this was, but what was the process, um, for the roundabout at Fifty-Sixth and Tom?
That was a county project?
Oh, yeah, duh.
Yeah, and, and that's...
Well, Twenty-third and Severance.
Right, and again, that's really not traffic calming, um, that's traffic control.
Okay.
So those are a major arterial or collector streets, and those are more about moving traffic efficiently through that particular intersection. What we're talking about here is calming traffic. What we're talking about here is calming traffic, slowing it down and reducing the volume in residential areas.
So the traffic calming that we have in place, cause looking at some of the options that are identified that could be put in, like I recognize that we have some of those already, um, traffic circle, for instance, roundabout, um, those are things that were just built into the streets already when they were designed.
That's right. So a, a good example is Hyde Park project.
Okay.
And we did, um, have intensive community engagement in the design of the Hyde Park, uh, streets. So those used to be brick streets. They became unmaintainable, almost intractable in areas. And so we reconstructed that Hyde Park residential area. And as part of that, we had designed charrettes where we invited the community. We looked at, you know, options to slow traffic because we didn't want Hyde Park Drive to become a cut through from Main to Adams. And so, um, that was a, a, that was just built into the design of those, uh, residential reconstruction projects.
And I'm, I'm getting a little bit out of hand here, but we're looking at the, the area and how changing one street could affect another. There's also other aspects of the street could be impacted too, such as stormwater drainage and things like that. And there might even be some aspects, cause I know in the neighborhood I live in, you're slowing down because of the flumes in the street, the dips in the street for water drainage. So I mean, when we're studying these things in certain neighborhoods, if it's an area prone to, prone to flood, there could be other ways to do traffic calming and help improve the drainage or other aspects of the street.
Yeah, all would be considered as part of that further investigation or study and analysis.
Did you get enough direction?
So, yeah, again, funding, and I know we've got a budget study session and there's plenty of time and opportunity to discuss the funding and how that might impact budgets.
I guess, to follow up on Scott's point, is there anybody in-house that can do these things? Or, or is that just, we're just short staffed? Or what's the?
Right. Um, I would say this is specialty enough that we would want to hire, um, a firm that has expertise in, uh, developing these traffic calming solutions. Now, the initial traffic studies, yes, we can do that in-house. We've got the, the devices that measure the speed and the volume of traffic and we can analyze that based on our policies. Is it hitting that criteria where we need to, you know, develop a, a community engagement meeting where we identify how much interest there is from, from that area of impact wide perspective. So yeah, we could do the initial piece in-house, but then as it progresses, we would want to hire some expertise.
Very good. I know, I'm always amazed when Brad comes and presents about these different things and like how much I learned just by realizing how little I know.
Brian's being really gracious and probably cautious, and that's good. I'm optimistic that the traffic calming we could try and do under MSA so that, that design cost would be, you wouldn't really see that, it'd be built into what we're already doing. To me, the big ticket items are the implementing in, in the, in the field. And that's where, you know, we can go through this process and start it tomorrow, but if we don't have the plans to implement it, then we're just having empty conversations and, and probably ending up with frustrated citizens. So kind of solving that, that construction budgeting item here, I think is probably pretty important. Otherwise the policy is just pretty empty. Um, the, the gentleman that made the comments earlier, I've been kind of thinking about what he said and, and so this is kind of diverting off budget very quickly. But, but he is correct that, uh, the engineering world has probably not always done a great job and maybe even a poor job of thinking about street width, sidewalks, multimodal connectivity and overall safety. And so that's known, we're doing better in the industry. It is a key focus. Safety is a focus. There's drive zero. The city Hutchinson is about to get a grant to do the safe streets for all, which is exactly what he's talking about. Now, you know, we don't have infinite construction dollars, we're talking about this right here. But, but, uh, it is well taken that, that we can do better about evaluating our streets holistically and our new streets and, and trying to make them safe for all citizens, not just drivers of cars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next item please.
Item nine C, consider changing city council meeting times.
John, you had some comments?
Yeah, I, I would like to see us move our city council meeting times to five thirty in the evening on the first and third Tuesday of the month, starting in September. I think that it allows more people to come to city council when they have an issue. Say people are speeding through their neighborhood and they can't come to city council at nine o'clock in the morning because they have work. I think it opens up more people to be able to run for city council. I know it creates a little bit of a hardship in regards to, uh, staff timing and staffing. But it creates a situation where we may not see more people showing up, but it allows more, it allows more opportunity for people to show up to city council meetings. And I think that's important for us. And people running for city council. Are you looking for a motion?
Well, I mean, we can further discuss it. I can, I can tell you, um, in the last two weeks, I've had fourteen meetings. Six of them were at nighttime. Eight of them were in the daytime and that doesn't include the times I've stopped by to sign a paper, talk to Enrico. That's what I signed up for. I knew what I was signing up for. When, uh, I took this job and got elected, um, I would, I would say, I, I mean, I, I definitely want to have folks be engaged. I feel like they are. I answer my emails, I take phone calls. I've heard from three people that want it moved to nights. And I've engaged with many others who say, leave it alone. This has been tried before. It hasn't worked. The youth city council meeting will need to be moved, um, talked to others, some of our other community partners, staff. Very concerned that we actually might not get as much engagement and clarity on business type issues that we have to take care of as a city because, you know, maybe Brad wouldn't be able to show up in the evening. Or, um, just my opinion and, and, um, that's, we certainly can move a meeting if, if we feel like, um, people, if there's a hot topic. Maybe we could have two evening meetings a year. I, I don't know.
I would, I would argue in the opposite. I think we were, we are odd man out in regards to communities that have meetings during the day. For the most part, I think most communities, and we've done, we've looked at it, most communities have their meetings in the evening. My point to argue in regards to what was done, and I think it was two thousand and eighteen, was it was done for five months and it was one evening a month and the other ones in the morning. It needs to be consistent at one time. Most, most community members or, or organizations that interact with city councils are going to be, uh, used to showing up the evenings. I go to council meetings, I go to planning and zoning meetings in the evenings in other communities. And for people looking to run for city council, um, we're one of the few communities, communities that has zero compensation. And that's not just money, that's other, you know, some communities, you get to keep your iPad at the end of the, you know, little things. We have zero compensation. The meetings are at nine AM on two, two Tuesdays a month. So we signed up for this.
Yeah.
The people looking to run for city council, it automatically X's out a big portion of our community from being able to participate and be involved in city council. We can work around our side meetings with our schedules quite a bit. But the actual city council meeting that you are, um, uh, requested to be at on a regular basis, nine AM, people are just going to make, say, can't do it, can't run. And we have a lot of community members already in our community because of their job or their positions and what they do. They can't do it. So creating a situation where it creates a smaller pool of people able to do it, and then it makes a smaller pool of people willing to do it, makes it very difficult to try to find, um, good community members, good representation of our community to be able to run for city council and be involved in the decision making. That's, that's a big part of, for me, um, I think the, the, uh, attendance is important, but I don't know if it's something to judge it off of. It's more of, when we do have an issue, more, there, there's a higher probability of somebody able to come to the city council at a meeting to make a point at five thirty in the afternoon, in the evening rather than nine AM. And that's where I, that's where I'm pushing for the five thirty.
Well, I do know that Mr. Garza is able to get off work and Ms. Goss is. Most employers, I would think, would be very accommodating if they knew, um, their employee was wanting to serve the public in this way.
I would say that a lot of them did not.
So my experience is hit or miss with that.
We can argue.
Because.
Oh, no, no.
When I first started. I was with a different organization that I had to use PTO to come. Um, so working for the.
I do too, just so you know.
The good of the community, et cetera, et cetera. There are some employers that, um, don't require you to use PTO. There are some that are going to ask you to shift your schedules. There are some that are just going to say, nope, we can't do it. So I think it just depends. Personally, right now, I, you know, I'm forty hours a week and if this meeting takes four hours, then I'm going to end up essentially doing four hours of work at night or on the weekends. So, um, it's not all just about the time that you're spending, um, away from the office, that there's the other time investment too. And to me, the time that I spend making up my work time is kind of just my commitment to, my other time commitment to this. But, um, we haven't opened this up to, um, public comment yet.
No, I fully intend to do that. I, I just wanted to hear from my counterpart.
Okay. Me, when I ran for city council, I had to, I was getting ready to get hard, going to an interview with the state. And I told them ahead of time that I was going to run for city council and it's possible I might win. And I did win and I went back to tell them and they said, okay, I had to make arrangements for them. I'll go, I'll go to work at five o'clock in the morning when I'm supposed to be there at six thirty. I make up comp time by that and I'm losing a lot of sleep. With, this is my, what I wanted to do, to serve the community. Uh, so I work nine to ten hours a day, only get for eight because I want to do that. Now, I think I'm for night meetings. Um, we would have, I agree with Mr., uh, my counterpart here, that you would get more people running for the city if they had an opportunity to, to get on the city council. A lot of it is because people can't get off. And, um, I was fortunate enough that, um, when I got hired, they would accept me coming in at five o'clock in the morning. I have to get up at three. That's me. I have to get up at three, no, every day to, to make sure I, I come in an hour early so I can be a council member. If I could do it all over again, I wouldn't be able to run. It's, um, it's hard on me. So I would think you'd have more people running for city council if you had it at nighttime. I'm just using me as an example. I don't know if everybody would be willing to, um, uh, go early in their office or work late at night. As a council member, you have a big responsibility. Even if I get home at two thirty, you can ask my wife over there. I'm dead to the moon when I get home at two thirty. I just head for the bed, is what I do. So I don't know if you have a lot of people would want to do that. So it depends on how much you want to be a council member. And, um, I would, I would suggest that you go to tonight meetings and you'd have more people wanting to become council members.
All right. So I'll, I'll give you my two cents. Um, so, I mean, I, same, same way I ran for city council, knowing that it's a nine o'clock meeting. And, you know, even if you move it to the night, you're still going to have a lot of daytime stuff that you're going to have to deal with as a city council member. So if you think that just being elected so you can come in at night, that's not going to be reality because you still have a lot of daytime commitments with this, with this position. The other thing I look at too is, you know, the thing I look at with our city staff, I don't want to impose on our city staff to go, okay, you've worked a eight, ten, twelve hour day. Now you gotta show up for city council, which, you know, you look at the time now, uh, five thirty, you know, we could have, we could have a meeting go till midnight, you know? And I don't know that I want to do that to a city staff member either, um, because it's just a lot, it's a big time commitment for them as well. And I don't know that I, I have the, uh, I can ask them to do that. So I mean, I, I agree with you that, yeah, it would be nice to have city council members be able to, more of them run because we have in the evenings. But I still don't know that it's really going to help, um, because they're still going to have a lot of time commitments during the day. That's my only concern. So I don't know, that's.
You, you said that better than I could. I, I would defer to Stacy here. What about the opposite argument of you have small children? Are you going to be, are you going to want to take two evenings away from them a month? I mean, I.
Well, so I already do because I have other night meetings as well. Um, but Tuesday is particularly difficult. Just because that's, there's always sports scheduled on Tuesdays. And so if I were to coach or, um, something like that, then, but it kind of takes me out of the running for that. But, um, I, I think reading back to, um, the minutes from two thousand and eighteen, cause this was tried, maybe not to fidelity, but it was tried. And, um, I think Jade Piras de Carvalho and, um, Dave Inskeep echoed the same sentiment, which is that it's our duty to be available and, um, ready to, to answer the call, um, when residents ask something of us, whether we're meeting in the morning or in the evening. We need to be available and communicative. And I, I feel like evenings are, I know my evenings are jam packed, full of stuff. Um, this is page one sixty-six, if you're looking for it. So, um, I don't know, I have mixed emotions on this. I, I don't think that moving to evening meetings is going to drive, if we're looking for hard data, I don't think moving to evening meetings is going to drive attendance, which is going to be difficult to measure. And then the second data point, if we're looking for, is this going to encourage people to run for office? I don't know that it will either, but also, um, maybe the person who's planning to run next time, maybe Tuesday at nine AM works better for them. And that's why they're already planning for the next round of election or what have you. But we're pretty far off from our next election cycle to begin with. We're still eighteen months out from, nineteen months out from the filing date even. So, um, I don't know.
Unbelievable, one year out.
Are we in two years?
Yes, the end of next year, there'll be an election in November. We have to file in June through May.
You know, maybe another thing to look at too is maybe we don't go to all evenings and maybe we go once a quarter. We have like an evening meeting to get, uh, commute, more community members to be able to participate. To, to maybe where our agenda's not very heavy. So that would give more people time to come in and actually talk about things. Maybe that's another option as well. I don't know.
Or, yeah, and maybe we have an issue that we think maybe, dare I say, push that off to the nighttime meeting because we know we're having one.
Right.
I don't know.
It, it inhibits people from having open communication from the audience that can't show up during normal work hours. And I'll, I'll argue it and I'll go along with whatever the vote is, but I would, I'm still going to argue that having it very early in the evenings, it needs to be regular, either in the evenings or in the morning. It doesn't need to be, hey, once a quarter. That, those, we could reserve that for study sessions on a particular topic or two particular topics. But I mean, I'd be interested to hear if all the people are.
Yeah, anybody here to speak to this issue, we would love to hear from anybody that's here.
Anyone that's able to be here at nine AM on a Tuesday?
Yeah, well, there's nobody here that, they can't be here.
I'm aware I'm filling my quota for comments today.
Yeah, your five minutes was up ten minutes ago.
Tony Finley, Hutchinson Recreation Commission. I am definitely in favor of, of you all moving to evening meetings. I have over twenty-seven years of experience in, in public government. Fifteen years of that was, uh, as a city department head, um, working for city council, city managers. And all of their, those three cities, all of their meetings were in the evening. And, uh, I found that to be the best opportunity for your residents to engage. Uh, not only, as you said, with, uh, the ability to run for office. Mayor Fast, I would strongly disagree that most employees are going to let people off, that they're not. I would even have a challenge, uh, for that. I would even have a challenge for that. And so I think you're going to, over time, you're going to see that. It's going to take time. Anytime you make a change like that in the culture of your community, it's going to take time for residents and everybody to accept that and to understand what that means. Will you see just residents randomly showing up to watch a city council meeting? No. But if there is an issue, if it is available when they don't have to ask off for work, they are going to be more amenable to showing up, right? They're going to have that ability to say, well, I don't have to ask off work. I don't have to make arrangements. I can come home. As a, you know, I can speak to this as a city department head, we're, most city department heads are salary, if not all. And we adjust our schedule as we need to adjust our schedule. And so if we have evening meetings, we adjusted that schedule. One of the cities I work for pretty much required department heads to be at every city council meeting, whether you had an agenda idam or not. And I would argue that most department heads do not need to be at every city council meeting. So it's not a, you know, at the end of the day, it's still two times a month, you know, to adjust your schedule. So I think if you look at it from where we want this city to go and the engagement that we want from all of our residents, moving to evening meetings is just the better way to do that. Thank you.
Good morning, council. Chantina Tipton, Hutchinson, Kansas. I am here today because I have actually done some community engagement with our community members in all districts. And I asked them, why don't I see you at city council? Is there reasons why you don't come? You have complaints. I go to community meetings and they talk about all their concerns and issues they have. And I ask them, why don't you come to the council and address those issues? And their response to me was, I work. My employer is not going to let me off to come to a city council meeting and address the issue in my neighborhood. Also, I asked a question about, why don't we have more representation running for city council? And the questions, and the answer that I got was, I work during the day. My employer is not going to let me to come off work to run for city council. So as I've done this community engagement, I encourage you to really consider the opportunity of going to the evenings, how it's going to open up the opportunity for more citizens to get engaged, to be involved, have the opportunity to come here and voice their concern to the council, and also have their opportunity, if they choose so, run for office, has that opportunity afforded to them without any barriers there. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I held a meeting, I don't know, a week and a half or two ago, and did a brief survey and there wasn't a ton of responses, but people were overall satisfied with the communication methods available to them to connect with council. And I also asked, where did it go? Sorry. On a scale of one to 10, how satisfied are you with the meeting times of the city council? Majority of respondents were five, which would be neutral. The second next would be that they're very satisfied at 12%. So, well, actually, and then seven at 12% as well. So, I don't know. I feel like no matter what, there's going to be people who can't run or can't attend because it's in the evenings and there's going to be people who can't run, can't attend because it's in the, during the workday too. And I don't know that there's a solution for that, but if we, I don't know, maybe if we've tried Tuesday mornings at 9:00 AM and we're not getting the engagement that we want, we should try something else.
Do we feel like we're not getting the engagement that we want?
It's not about the engagement we want. It's about people being able to come and engage at all. I mean, and I'm, I mean, I'm fine if we take a vote and we leave it the way it is. I just think there's a very valid reason to move it to the evenings, even though there's opposition to it. I think we've made all the points we want to make on it.
I would agree.
It's going to be, it's going to be pain, I mean, whether we leave it the way it is and, or whether we change it. If we change it, it's going to, there's going to be some pain for us, the five of us up here, to change our schedules. And I understand that. And it's not what we signed up for. We signed up for 9:00 AM.
Reality, though, it would be easier for me to come in the evenings. I mean, but, and I'm sure it would be for everybody to come in the evenings because you don't have to worry about your job, stuff like that. But again, I just come back to the city staff. That's my thing that I'm sticking to. I just don't feel like putting them, you know.
We're already making adjustments for planning and zoning meetings, all the other meetings at 5:30 at night.
There's one more.
And human relations is meeting today and they're discussing moving to night meetings too. So if we're choosing this time, we, is that the time that we want?
City council, the youth city council has to move.
I would put, not that we're so important, but I would put the city council meeting as priority and everyone else needs to work around it as far as.
And you know, since I'm representing my community, I'm going to, I'm going to have a meeting here next week. I'm going to ask my community members what they would prefer because, I mean, that's who I'm here to serve. So if they would prefer we go tonight, then maybe that's where I go eventually. And maybe that's what we have to do is seek more community input.
Well, and lest anybody here think that I haven't been talking to people about this issue, I have.
Well, let me ask this. If we're going to have meetings on our own to seek public input, are we doing those outside of work hours? Or are we planning those at 2:00 in the afternoon or 9:00 in the mornings? Are we saying, hey, I'm going to have a community meeting at 5:30 or 6:00 PM after work? Try to be there.
They're.
What do you think we're going to try to get more engagement if we're going to have our own meetings to try to communicate with the public? Just don't have to.
I know you're.
Good point, John.
I had that.
I'm not saying I'm passionate about it. I just think it's logical to me.
I agree.
Okay, how about a motion?
Well, I would move to move the city council meetings to 5:30 in the evening, the first and third Tuesday of the month, starting in September of 2024.
And I second that.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion, Mary?
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Nagers?
No.
Goss?
Yes.
Bass?
No.
You know I love you guys, right?
When did it start, did you say?
September.
September.
What day in September?
9th.
Starting the first and third Tuesday of the month in September.
September 3rd.
Next item.
Item number 10, report of city officials.
Scott?
Okay. So a few things I have is, I guess, moving to your point a little bit more to the evening meetings. The meet and greet went well. However, I did get some comments from people that they wish it could be outside of work hours. So I guess that's a point to your night meetings. So that would be something to look at, is to have us maybe a Saturday or an evening meet and greet with Enrico because he's a great guy and I want everybody to meet him. So that's the one thing I have. And then again, our city staff stepped up with the Saturday storm that came through and took care of everything needed to as well. And then I will be having a meeting on June 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Dillon Nature Center cabin. Some of the things that are going to be discussed are Orchard Park, 43rd and Halsted, and then the Panorama Street, problems we have going on there. And then we're also inviting David Frison, the commissioner, and Randy Partington, the county administrator. And then also, if there's anything that any of the community members also would like to discuss while we're there, open for any other discussion as well. And I invite you all to come as well. And then the Salt City Raceway, they're going to be having another race this Friday at 7:00. So I encourage all of you to come out and support the Salt City Raceway. And then the Chip Seal Project started in my area. It seems to be going well. The only comments I received was, when is our trash going to be picked up? So I'm assuming that the trash will be picked up the day after because like ours was on Friday and so they weren't sure if it was going to be picked up Monday or when they were coming back. So just something to, I guess, note to make sure people know when their trash pickup is going to be. And then the, I wasn't able to attend the BMX track opening on Saturday, but I heard it went very well. And then I think that's all I have.
All right, Garza?
Yes. Now, I'll start getting some sleep in September, this is good. So, yeah, my meeting that I have every year, have every two months has been, I'm not having it for the simple reason I've been waiting for our new city manager to get in. Now that he's here, the zone, Mr. Patterson, he's been on vacation. He'll be back in July. So we'll resume our zone meetings on Avenue B Street. The first week, what's the first week in July 2nd? Is that right? July 2nd? The first weekend of July 2nd, July 6th, we'll have our meeting back at the zone with all the people that come and want to talk about things. So July 6th is when we'll have a meeting down on the zone. And I will let you know more about that. So get it going. Garza's back and he's going to have plenty of sleep and we'll have meetings. Also that, I want to talk to the people who are city employees who've done a great job picking up and during the storm, we had another burst of storm just last couple of days ago. We have more limbs on the ground and everything like that. And our city employees have been doing a great job that I've seen. I've been getting a lot of good comments on that. And also, one other thing I want to do is the South End. I'm standing up here, standing up for you. You need to come to my meeting and stand up for me. You need to come there and give me your voice, give me your backing, and all of us together, that's how we get things done. I don't want to see you telling me they're not going to do nothing for you anymore. I addressed that today. You have to come and together we can get stuff done. That's the whole city. That's even this new plan. I could have been very well said no, but that's not good for the city. But it's good for the cities to make us better and vibrant. And this new plan will make us better and pliant. So I hope I made my, I hope I made it clear that we're going to get together. I made my statement today, let's work on the South End. And also, Carriville has been getting a hold of me and telling me they need more representation, more or less that we got to include Carriville on this south end of town. I went down there and the streets are terrible, like all streets we have. We'll get together with them. Carriville, you need to come to my meetings. I'm telling you now, get it out. Need to come to my meetings at the zone on the 6th so we get together and get plans of what's going on. We're all Hutchinsonians. We all live here together. We all proud of our town, let's make it better. Okay? Thank you, sir.
You bet. Stacy?
First off, come to the races, but there's also so many different things to do this weekend, so hopefully everybody finds something that is suitable for them. The bike event last weekend was absolutely amazing. Everybody who put work into planning that event, it was really great to see not only Louis Cortez come and do the tricks that he did, which I don't know how you do that because I don't know how to do those things at all. But like, I think it proved to a lot of the younger kids, you know, to take a risk and like have some fun. And if they, if biking's not their thing, we have a lot of other things in the community to keep them entertained. I do appreciate Harley's Bicycles for passing out youth helmets. There's a huge need in the community and they passed out, I don't know how many, 49 helmets to kids who were there who didn't have a helmet. So that's 49 heads protected from here on out. Monday, the 10th, this past Monday, we held a walking meeting. Thank you to HPD, Mary Grace Clemens, Enrico Yegas, and Greg Fast. We walked just under a mile and a half and we went from, essentially we went from Lincoln Elementary on Bigger over to Plum, down to Campbell, and then over to Main, and then back across on, on Bigger. The goal was to identify streetlights that were out, whether they'd been knocked out by storm damage or from just deterioration or what have you. But we covered that topic, but we also talked about sidewalk grants program, code enforcement, dead and disabled vehicles, possible infill opportunities. There's a lot of potential and we only covered a mile and a half of area. It was really good to connect with the neighbors and build that rapport. The next day, I spoke with our representative from Evergy, gave him the list of what we had identified. And I know he also followed up with Mary Grace and Enrico in a meeting later that day. So I communicated back with the resident about Evergy's repair process and if there is a new light that needs to be put up, how long does that take, that sort of thing. Just in the past eight days, we've had numerous, lights have already been fixed, dead and disabled vehicles have been moved. There's already been progress being made. So that was really profound to see. Oh, and then the stepping up meeting. Greg tasked me with attending the stepping up meeting, which I think is the answer to, you know, what is the city doing about X, Y, and Z? What is the city doing about homelessness and mental health and recidivism? So in the stepping up meeting, which happens approximately once a quarter, representatives from corrections and the courts and HPD and the sheriff and the city, as well as nonprofit partners like Hutch Regional, Horizons, United Way, and I'm probably forgetting some. They all come to the table and they talk about different subjects of essentially how to address mental health in the community and homelessness is a piece of that, recidivism is a piece of that. And this topic in particular last week was about assisted outpatient treatment. So what this program is, just to give you guys an update on some of the progress that hopefully we'll see here in Hutchinson soon. After a person has a non voluntary commitment to a state hospital such as Larned, they can be placed, essentially they have a medical order, a court order for outpatient treatment, which is AOT. And then Horizons supports that person by touching base with them in a similar role of a probation or a parole officer, except that the goal is to have medication compliance to help them stay on track with job and finding housing and all sorts of things that can really make their lives better. So they're talking about what metrics to track and what that program looks like, not only from that standpoint, but also legally. So it's a really great program and I'm, my explanation is not doing it justice whatsoever, but this is just one of the ways that the community is coming together to make progress on this issue. And it's a multifaceted issue. So it was really, it was really good to attend and learn more about that program. The next meeting is in August, which I will attend that one as well. And I think that covers it. I really appreciated the robust conversations that we had today. I appreciate working with all of you guys.
Well, thank you for stepping up.
One more thing, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I don't want to forget June, tomorrow, the 19th, we got to support each other in our community. Make sure we all go there and do the best we can. So just showing up is our support, okay? And to show up, have our support. Me and my wife got something going. We're leaving tonight and hopefully we'll be back tomorrow. We'll try to, but I want you to say something, you got to bye-bye it. I got to say what I do, do what I say. So try to, everybody, the 19th is our community, let's support them.
Thank you, sir.
John?
Well, we talked about a lot of things that are happening this month and somebody, somewhere will still say that there's nothing going on in Hutchinson. There's nothing to do. I would say that over the last few weeks, these storms we've had, it's really pointed out that people either are confused or.
the, that people either are confused or don't understand or don't know where to find, um, some of our ordinances in regards to.
We talked about this.
Particularly tree limbs in the street, on the curb, sidewalk. And I, I think we need to communicate, um, put something out there, and, and people are gonna not like it because they think it's the city's responsibility. I pay taxes, this, that, and the other. But we have these codes in place, and we need to enforce them so that it doesn't create more of a burden on our entire community, and we have to, like, we have a street sweeper, right? Even though most people don't realize it's their responsibility to clean the curb and gutter in front of their house. The street sweeper is because some, some places don't get cleaned. But because people see it, they automatically think, well, the city needs to come clean my curb and gutter. That's an example of how things can kind of exacerbate over time and become more of a burden on the city rather than people taking personal responsibility for their property. So I think it's important that we put a, uh, some information out there in regards to particularly tree limbs right now, so that people understand where, where the line is drawn on responsibility. Um, and I know there, it'd probably be best to give some, some various examples. I don't have a tree in my ha-, at my house. Why is there a tree in front of my house now? Who handles that? It's my neighbor's tree from down the street, you know? Or my trampoline, my neighbor's trampoline's in my yard. What do I do with that? Uh, 'cause that's caused a lot of confusion with community members, and they call Greg, 'cause I tell them to call Greg. That's all I have.
Well, and just, just so the public knows, you can look on hutchgov.com um, and find those ordinances. I was called by a reporter the other day about that specific ordinance. Before I called them back, I went right to the ordinance, and it's pretty self-explanatory there. I have two things. Southwest Brick Town Fiesta coming up in September. Um, still working through details on that. Um, our zoo accreditation happened, uh, last week. I was able to attend, uh, a meeting with, uh, three people from out of state that, uh, that come around to our zoo. I wanna make it, uh, I wanna, I wanna just say that, that there are twenty-eight hundred zoos in the United States and surrounding countries. We are one of two hundred, I believe, that are accredited. We, we should be very proud of that. Um, who knew? And going through that process every five years, uh, as mayor, I'm a part of that. We talked about how we fund it, how we make decisions about the zoo, who's running the, who's running the zoo? How do they run the zoo? So, um, uh, my understanding is we, we passed with, uh, another five years of accreditation. So great job, Justin and Nicole. So, um, I believe that is all. Um, Enrico?
Uh, I'll keep mine brief. I, I do, uh, wanna highlight a lot of what you have said as well, um, that I've been, uh, very impressed, especially with the turnout at the Bike Bash. I thought that was a very good event, so thank you, Justin, for putting that on. Um, another unique fact about that, are we the only pump track in Kansas? Three in the country, and we're one of them. And so that's another, uh, bragging right that the city has, and another talking point, uh, that we can tell the community, um, just a lot of the assets that we're investing in, and to, just to try to attract a diverse array of people that may wanna come to Hutch for those reasons, and being able to, uh, bring up, bring in a professional BMX rider, I think is really unique. Um, and I, I do wanna thank for the community members that were able to show up to the coffee and conversation with me yesterday. Um, I, I did appreciate that. Everyone made me feel welcome, um, so thank you for that. Um, other than that, I've just been nothing short of impressed by the caliber of employees that we have, just, um, from frontline all the way up to department head. Um, they show up and they, they work hard, and so, um, I, I definitely wanna take the time to thank them for all of their contributions.
Very good. Um, we need to move into executive session. I, I would say thirty minutes.
Yep.
Um, we have, we have another meeting at noon, you know that.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, so could I get a motion for meeting into executive session until noon?
So moved.
Second. Paul Rolfe?
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Yes.